I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. On the agenda, we have a public hearing for Seeing Hearts Transition Home, who applied for a conditional use permit on a property containing approximately 2.29 acres, located at 1223 Sycamore Street, Danville, Kentucky. The property is owned General Residential, Small Lot, GRB. This is a continuation of a hearing started on August the 16th. Steve?
Make sure this thing works. Yeah, we're good. Appreciate that. I've got the staff report.
I don't think you're on.
Is it on? I think it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got the staff report on the PowerPoint up there. You guys have the exact document, except for a couple definitions that I put in there at your seat. Most of this is for the crowd, I guess, so they could see some exhibits. But I'm just gonna walk right through the staff reports that you guys had mailed out in your packet. We had an application filed on July 26, 2018, for Seeing Hearts Transition Home, Incorporated. Location of the proposed application is 1223 Sycamore Street, that you guys see on that page one, outlined in that red box. The current zoning of that property is GRB, or as we know it, General Residential, Small Lot. On the front page of your staff report, there is an interesting note, that the existing land use is a non-conforming commercial structure. That's rare sometimes when we're looking at cases, but again, a lot of times that might have said vacant, or residential, or industrial. But in this case, it is a non-conforming commercial structure located in a residential district. Property size, you see there's .290 acres. The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for a residential transition home in the GRB, or again, General Residential, Small Lot zoning district. Again, top of page two, you can see the zoning layer, and again, I'm gonna point at this more for the crowd than over top of you guys, but there's the property at the corner of Sycamore and Beach. There's a property that's being proposed, and you can see the yellow shading is our General Residential zoning district in this area. Next section's interesting. On page two, we talk about the zoning ordinance. It says, "This provision of the zoning ordinance which the conditional use is being requested is outlined in Article 5, Section 5.3.1." And then I wanna read this, too. I think this is important. There's a, that's the intent statement from the zoning ordinance for the General Residential Small Lot District, and I wanna read that with the intent statement. It says, "The General Residential District is intended to promote the health of neighborhoods as well as providing for their expansion along with the traditional physical form with they, which they were established. The district is divided into three types of lots based upon size in order to promote the neighborhood fabric appropriate to the individual communities within Boyle County. All uses on A and B lots shall be residential, C shall be reserved for civic uses." So I think it was interesting, the intent statement. We don't see a lot of things in single-family districts, but there are some CUPs that it could come before you guys, and that's the intent statement that tells us what the single-family district is intended to do, and it mentions the physical form, which I think goes at the core of the argument here today, is there's a proposal to do a use in a neighborhood, yet there's an existing commercial, non-conforming structure in the neighborhood. So what is the physical form? What is the character of the neighborhood? But there, the intent statement says, what we're trying to do with our neighborhoods, again, promote, order to promote the neighborhood, again, in an appropriate fashion. So the use is permitted by right. This comes up all the time. It's not really relevant tonight, but those are the things we can do in a single-family district by right. Pretty much have a home, have a small kind of home occupation, or possibly do a duplex. There's not a whole lot you can do in a single-family district besides live there as a family, et cetera. The use is permitted by condition, or what you see next on page two, and we'll jump to the next page. If this is gonna work. I hope it does. There it is. They got tech support back there in the back, so. So, we have different kinds of conditional use permits you can apply for, and we need to make a, point out a change to you. We list what we can do, certain kinds of conditional use permits, bed and breakfasts, cemeteries. There's other things that you can make an application in a single-family neighborhood to be reviewed, like we're here tonight. Category 10 says, "Any other use is determined by the board to be of the same general character." It was pointed out to me today by our legal folks, that that number 10 was amended out of the ordinance in 2016, and that was the same time they put in the CUP for the hazardous pipeline verbiage that went into the ordinance in 2016. At the same time, they took that section out of the ordinance. Unfortunately, it's still in the book, because the books have never been codified. Even the pipeline verbiage that was amended into the ordinance has never actually been put into the book, because the book is not in a digital form. It was a scanned-in document, and so that number 10 is actually gone from the book. But way on back, when the applicant and I were discussing a transition home, and I'm gonna kinda walk you through some definitions here in a second, you know, I was getting familiar, what is a transition home? It didn't really fit a lot of our terminology, but we were first talking, well, it's kinda like a rooming and boarding house, but my knowledge of a rooming and boarding house is what we traditionally all knew, maybe back when you were in college, or had a friend, what a rooming and boarding house was. A transition home almost fits that perfectly, except for a little caveat or two, so we used the all-other category, because we weren't sure where the term really fits. Before we go any further, I wanna point out some of those terms. And what this really shows me, that our zoning ordinance, again, is somewhat dated, and I knew this was gonna wipe this out, but we have terms in our book that are kinda terms that are, again, the ordinance is almost 15 years old. So this is what a rooming and boarding house is, right here. I won't read into this, but basically, it says, "You have three or more people that live there for more than seven days, and this table says it doesn't have to be owner-occupied." So it breaks down the difference between a bed and breakfast, a boarding house, a hotel, and a multifamily dwelling. Most of those sorta make sense, but the reason why we didn't think it fit the boarding house exactly, is there's some other verbiage that says it's supposed to be single-owner-occupied. But I think that's when we were trying to convert a house, as opposed to having the bigger structure. The other term we struggled with, and let me jump into this, is this is our definition... Well, let's just skip that one and go on to the next one here. That one's not really that relevant. This thing is not acting right now. Here we go. This is our definition of what's a family. This comes up anytime we're in a single-family district. What is our definition? We actually have a definition in our community. A lot of cities have definitions of what's a family. It's surprising to a lot of people in modern times, when we have more non-traditional kind of family units. But our definition is two or more people related by blood, marriage, adoption, and not more than four unrelated, that occupy a dwelling and maintaining a common household. So what our rule is, is a family, is four people, sorta live together as a functioning house. We share kitchens, bathrooms, living, but we maybe all have bedrooms. That's a family under our definition, and single-family means you get one of those. So you can have any number of folks that are related by blood, marriage, adoption, or four unrelated people. So when you get to five people, you can't have five guys living in a house in a single-family district. That would be a multifamily use. So we have that definition in our ordinance, and it's somewhat dated, too, but it's not unusual to see those in zoning ordinances around the country. Let's get this thing... All right, there we go. So, this is where we kinda get a little confusing here. This is our definition of group home, and I apologize about this, when we highlighted that in yellow on the PowerPoint, it just blocked out the word, but this is group home. I would think a transition home would fit the definition of a group home, because a group home could be a lot of things: a fraternity, a sorority, a halfway house, lots of different things are group homes. Our definition of a group home is specifically related to having a disability. So it's four or more persons in a facility where there's some kind of disability, and the group home specifically says does not include drug and alcohol treatment serving as an alternative to incarceration. But most group homes are all the above, including fraternities and sororities, but ours is specifically to disabilities. Again, this dates the ordinance to some level. The next one down is a halfway house. It's a dwelling unit shared by four or more persons, and resident staff who live together is a single-house-keeping unit, and is an alternative to incarceration. But as we know today, there's all kinds of halfway houses that aren't always alternatives to incarceration. There's some for domestic violence and spousal abuse, and people check in and out. They're not always, have gone through a sentence or been arrested. So our terms for group house, halfway house, family, lodging, and boarding house are very dated. So the challenge here was, is what is a transition home, and where does it fit? So again, we felt it was closest to rooming and boarding, and moved the CUP forward in that fashion. And of course, we have a rehabilitation house, which actually deals with drug and alcohol treatment. So these terms are very confusing, and the reason why they're relevant is we have to figure out, is this conditional use permit eligible to even apply for in a single-family zone? So again, we latched this application to the rooming and boarding house, and we'll let the applicant describe to you what he says is a transition home, because it is somewhat of a new term, and his facility is very unique, and I think that best describes his vision of what a transition home is. But for us, from the zoning ordinance, it was hard to make a one-for-one match, because we have some old terminology. But in general, it's a group home, where basically there will be a number of folks living in this home. They'll have individual bedrooms, or maybe shared bedrooms, but they'd be sharing common spaces, eating, possibly bathrooms, areas, living spaces. So that, they are still technically a single household unit. So that's what makes them kind of a group home. But they're over the number of what defines a single family. Very confusing stuff, and I apologize for that, but that's what our ordinance says today. I won't read all this stuff at the top of page four. The applicants did put a pretty good narrative forward, and I put that in your packet, on what the program is about, how it's gonna kinda make determinations, and I'll let them kinda outline that. But as you guys know, part of a conditional use permit is exactly as it sounds, conditions. So the applicant can put forward conditions in the conditional use permit, or the board can impose some conditions. But what normally happens is folks get up and ask questions, and suggest ideas, and conditions evolve on the floor, as you guys know, and sometimes, again, they're, they come from the beginning, and sometimes they come right from this bench right here. So the applicant put six conditions forward, and as you guys know, the conditions run with the real estate. If this application's approved, these conditions are recorded in the courthouse, and they run with the land, like deed restrictions or restrictive covenants. And they can only be changed by coming back to this body. So here's the conditions that the applicant put forward. Number one, the facility will not exceed 16 residents. Number two, inside and the roof exiting the building will be renovated, exterior will be cleaned and lighted with spotlighting, no exterior, additional construction to the existing facility. The existing parking spaces will be significant and utilized, no additional parking will be constructed. Number four, perimeter security of building will be installed with ability to monitor entry and exit of individuals. Number five, camera surveillance will be installed to the building and parking areas. And six, no freestanding signage will be installed on the property. All signage will be wall-mounted, or basically signage on the front of the building. Bottom of page four, again, talks about the findings that you guys have to go through to make a determination. I put some pictures in the packet. Again, staff items of concern, or you know kinda how we finish out the staff report. The only real staff item of concern we had was that obviously there's gonna be parking, there'll need to be trash facilities. We would recommend that the applicant maybe make an additional condition, that they'll be in compliance with the landscape ordinance for all of those. The parking lot is in a raw form from a prior day. To come into compliance with the zoning ordinance, we need to strike parking, we need to landscape somewhat, and any dumpsters or service containers will need to be landscaped. This shows you the building from a different angle, the parking lot down the side, which obviously has some code enforcement violations right there, that we're told might be related to some neighbors or someone in the neighborhood, but obviously, all of this would have to be cleaned up. But the parking lot, as you can see, is pretty much asphalt, corner to corner, and to comply with the zoning ordinance, we need to do some kinda landscaping, screening of the main travel ways, maybe define that access point into the lot, and obviously, screen any dumpsters. That's something we'd ask that the applicant might commit to. This is the back of the building, or a loading dock, again, from a day gone by, when the building was used for a different use, and then a shot down beach that, again, just gives some kinda scale to the building, and the type of residential structures that we have down beach and in the neighborhood. Hopefully you guys were able to go out and visit the site, and that's the neighborhood on the bigger aerial, and I think I finished up with the zoning ordinance, I believe. And there it is. So, again, hopefully you guys were able to go out and look, and kinda see the dynamic we have here, which is a single-family neighborhood with smaller homes, with an existing commercial building in the neighborhood that's currently vacant. Again, the applicant's here, and he has an attorney, and I believe there's several folks here on both sides of this issue that probably wanna possibly ask me a question, or maybe the applicant, so I'm not sure how we'll go about this, but that kinda finishes my part of this. I'd be glad to answer any questions you guys might have for me related to the zoning ordinance or the application.
I don't have any now, if I can hear anybody else. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilkinson, you're your attorney telling us about your request. One deal, okay.
Ms. Johnson, if the board will allow me, I'd like to make some brief, kinda preliminary statements. Mr. Wilkinson's here. This is obviously his baby and his dream, so he wants to kinda flesh in some of what I say, but I wanted to start out, kinda lay our groundwork here. I wanted to say thank you for the board for rescheduling this hearing. We welcome the community involvement. I know there's gonna be arguments on both sides of this, but hopefully, what transpires tonight is for the benefit of everybody. Just to begin with, we are going under the boarding and lodging house definition. If you look at the zoning ordinance, I believe that the boarding and lodging house states that there is a minimum of three residents, and a minimum stay of seven days at the boarding or lodging house. I think we fall squarely within that. From my conversations with Mr. Wilkinson, it looks like the individuals are gonna be there for approximately, I think, six to 12 months is really kinda the ideal timeframe for them to be at this transition house. Now, we did put a cap on our available rooms if the conditional use permit is granted at 16. That's a ceiling, I just want everybody to know that. That's not saying we're gonna have 16 rooms here, and that's our plan. I think really, we need to kinda get into it and see what, what we can do with the space, but 16's our main hope. And I wanted to start, and kinda build back from the motion that Steve included in the staff report. One, our proposed use of this property is not going to cause any sort of overburden of public infrastructure or services. This building, if the board will recall, I think, was a dialysis clinic, it's been a laundromat, it's been a grocery store. It's, as Steve said, kind of an anomaly. It's been a commercial enterprise that's in the middle of a neighborhood. So I think the neighborhood's kinda built around this infrastructure. It's got its own parking lot. The 16 rooms, that would be 16 occupants at most. That's not gonna significantly affect the traffic congestion. It's got its own parking lot, so there shouldn't be any sort of parking issue or cars out in the street. And obviously, we will comply with every zoning ordinance to the T in cleaning this up, so I wanna put the board's mind at ease about that. But I think the main thing that everybody, that I think the community out here is about is the, Steve's got it labeled as numerical A, but I've saved it for last, is that this project is not going to be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. And I say that really for a number of reasons. As we sit in this room tonight, this evening, that building is completely empty. It has no activity whatsoever, other than it looks like people putting trash in the back corner and parking cars there. It's just, it's essentially decaying out there. The handrails, you can see, I think, from the photographs in your staff report, are rusty, they're dilapidated, they're falling off of the building. Mr. Wilkinson and Seeing Hearts are asking the board tonight to allow them to breathe new life into this building. The plan, as Steve and I think Mr., you all are aware from Mr. Wilkinson's prior statements in the staff report, is create a residential transition home. It's not a rehabilitation center, it's not a halfway house, and it is not a court-ordered alternative to incarceration. I think that last one is very important for everybody to realize. Seeing Hearts is planning on going out to the Boyle County Detention Center, going out to North Point, asking the administration at these facilities, "Who are your bright spots in these facilities? Who are the guys that are really striving to better themselves? Who are the guys that are really showing a rehabilitated outlook on life? And who are the ones that are making your facility a better place for the other inmates?" Then, that, and who's, who's looking at the end of their incarceration? Who's four to six weeks out from the end of their incarceration? At that point, it's my understanding that Mr. Wilkinson will meet with those inmates after getting the reports from the administration, and evaluate them themselves, and take recommendations from the administration, and he can probably fill the board in a little bit better than I can on that portion of it. And choose, and actually offer to these individuals, "Hey, would you like this opportunity? We've started this transition home. We think it's gonna be a great thing. It can help you get on your feet, once you are released, and build a foundation for that individual upon release to get back out in the real world." Because with or without this facility, the individuals who are nearing the end of their incarceration are going to be released from incarceration. They're coming out into the public, and that's fine, they've spent their time, but a lot of them will find that being released from incarceration, it's hard to get a stable ground underneath you, once you get back out into the real world. Just to give the board some ideas, the National Institute of Justice gives the following statistics. For individuals released within, sorry, inmates that are released, within three years of that release, 67.8% will be rearrested. Within five years, that number jumps up to 76.6. And we feel and believe that this facility is going to improve the health and welfare and safety of the community by taking these individuals that are facing such a momentous hardship coming out of, out of incarceration, not having a job, not having a place, a stable place to say, not having any sort of direction, not having somebody there that will kinda go out and advocate for them, and rehabilitate them more than they already have. Because if you, like I said earlier, we're only gonna take the individuals that have shown progress. And we wanna take that progress that they have made and help them maintain it, because that's the hard part. You can get out, and you can be at a good place, but it only, it's only, it's a very easy step, misstep to take, where you would fall back into your old habits, and we wanna prevent that. We've agreed to various conditions that are reflected in the staff report. We're not gonna exceed 16 residents, and we might not ever hit that number. We're gonna completely renovate this building that right now is dilapidated, we're gonna clean it up, put all-new windows, all-new handrails, paint it, or maybe not paint it, but I think just clean it up and make it what it could be. Video surveillance will be employed, we're gonna have checks on who's entering and who's leaving the building via PIN numbers or key cards, or something of that nature. And taking all of this, I think that we fit squarely within the requirements for a conditional use permit, that this is a great thing for Danville, and could be a great thing for the community, and especially for members of the public that are coming out of incarceration and are lost. This can be something that can really be an amazing thing for them. And I just hope the board understands that, sympathizes with that, and approves this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilkinson, do you want to add anything?
Yes.
Sir, are you an attorney?
Am I an attorney?
Yes. Okay, then I need to swear you in, that's all.
Oh, okay.
It won't hurt a bit. Raise your right hand.
Oh, you didn't need to swear.
Yeah, I didn't need to swear you in. Do you swear in a firm statement you're about to make, or truly correct?
Yes, I did.
Okay, tell us more about your request.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Franklin, I appreciate it. Thanks for coming out here. Mr. Hunter, appreciate your, your help and assistance all throughout this process. Board, thank you for your time coming again tonight.
Can you speak into the mic? Yeah, the mic. You're not gonna be able to hear you in the back at all.
If I said I wasn't uptight right now, I'd be lying. I am uptight. This is a very important moment for me personally, for the people that have come on board, supporting Seeing Hearts Transition Home, Inc., and I believe also for Boyle County and the region here in Kentucky. I wanna say, first of all, that I'm thankful that, again, that we live in a country, Mr. Kim, where we can come together and we can discuss these things, in civility and respect and dignity. It's a privilege to be able to do such things, and I think a lot of people don't understand when they live in areas or other countries in the world, they can't do these things, these rights that we have, they're very precious, and I cherish them. People can change. I know that they can, because I'm one of them. Storms come in life for everybody. There's a word for that. It's called "life," and the storms come. The storms came for me many years ago, and this is a pattern I've seen over and over and over again. Life kicked me, and it kicked me hard, and I didn't know how to respond to it, in my fear, in my confusion, in my lostness. And I took an already bad situation, and I made it so much worse. In 12 years, since I walked out of a Florida state prison for one year, I served one year and a day for four felony counts of drug possession, through my faith in God, and through immense personal effort, my life has been renewed, redeemed, restored, and all the other re-words that you can think of. In 2006, when I served a year in prison, it's when my life started to change. It's when good things in my life started happening. My eyes were opened, my heart was opened, my mind was open. I had some of the most honest discussions I've ever had in my life, sitting in a state-issued uniform with a white stripe running down the leg. God taught me many things about Him, many things about myself, and many things about others during this time. And I came to see that there is a very significant portion of our incarcerated population that are not evil monsters. There's some bad guys in there. Please, everyone, don't misunderstand me. And I certainly believe in consequence and punishment, when people have to be accountable for their actions. But there's a significant portion of our prison, of our incarcerated population that are not lost causes. They can be helped. They want help. And as a Christian, I hate to use the word "deserve," but by golly, they deserve our help. Because there's many people in this life, from the time that they were two or three years old, life has kicked them around. Life has been very, very hard on them, and they really have no reason to believe that anything will ever be different. They really have no reason to believe that the mistakes that they made won't end up defining them for the rest of their lives. I've worked with many, many county inmates and state prison inmates at this point. I have seen the coldest of hearts open. I've seen men that had no real reason to believe that anything could ever be different in this, in this life, become productive members of society. At Seeing Hearts Transition Home, we will prayerfully seek out individuals that have done two things. They have illustrated accountability for their crimes. In other words, they know what they did was wrong. In other words, they know what they did was wrong. And number two, they have exhibited a trackable, traceable, sincere desire to change their lives. Just because you're walking out of an incarceration situation does not mean that we will have a place for you at Seeing Hearts Transition Home. We will prayerfully and intentionally seek men that have taken advantage of the resources available to them. This is what they're supposed to do, isn't it? This is how we hope to rehabilitate them. This is how we hope to give them a second chance in life. So we're looking for men that have gotten their GED. They've gone to vocational classes. They've learned how to weld. They've learned how to woodwork or be a carpenter. They learned how to become an electrician. They've taken their substance abuse prevention programs. They've been involved in a Celebrate Recovery or other recovery support groups and meetings. They've been involved in faith-based programs. And we all know without a doubt that the introduction of spiritual and faith-based programs in an incarceration situation vastly reduces the violence on prison campuses, on camps and county jails. We know that, the numbers are there, it's incredible. These are not people that normally would continue serving an incarceration sentence if it wasn't for Seeing Hearts. We're not introducing an element to the neighborhood or society that normally wouldn't be there. These are people that have completed their sentences. They are returning to our communities last month, last week, today, tomorrow, next month and next year. In Boyle County, in Kentucky, in the United States of America, every single day, people walk free back into our societies. Many of them are overwhelmed by the daunting task of rebuilding their lives. Once the boot of life gets on your neck, it is incredibly hard to get it off, albeit much of it is self-inflicted, like it was for me. We will provide job assistance, job placement assistance. Hold on, let me back up, please. I will go personally and interview people that are being released. I will look for accountability. I will look for that sincere desire to change and have they taken advantage of the resources available to them. I will talk with administration officials. I will talk with the correctional officers and I will have a personal interview with them to decide if we believe that these people are sincere about changing their lives. You know, when I got out in two thousand and six, my mother, my mother Martha, was at the bus station waiting to pick me up. She took me on to her home, to her home, and she nurtured me and she loved me and she supported me while I began the long road of rebuilding my life. I went to a temporary day labor place to show my mom that I was serious about changing my life, to show myself for crying out loud, and to prove to everyone that I could do this. And I signed up for a job at 5:45 in the morning. I signed the sheet. The guy came out and he said, hey, guys, there's a lot of you out here today. Who of you has been convicted of a felony? This is at a temporary day labor place in Bradenton, Florida. Seventy percent of us rose our hands. He said, I'm sorry, guys, I have nothing for you today. Come back. We're going to, we're going to give work to the guys that haven't gotten in trouble. I drove home in my mother's S U B that morning as the sun was coming up and the fear set in on me. If you can be naive in coming out of prison, I was. I thought I had served my sentence, I'm going to get on with my life, there's a little bit of bump in the road, but it's going to be okay. I couldn't even get a job digging a ditch for the day. I found myself with a Boost Mobile Cellular sign dancing on the side of the road three separate occasions because I sat in job interview after job interview where nobody would hire me because I was a convicted felon with four felony drug possession charges. I could see the possibility of me working at their establishment just fall right out of their eyes as we got to the part where I had checked I was a convicted felon. It's extremely discouraging. It's very hard. And I can tell you today, if it weren't for my faith in God, Pastor B, if it weren't for my faith in God and my mother being there for me, I probably would have failed again. You see, there's a myth that if you're in prison, you're a bad person. I know better now. I know better now. If you're in prison, you've made a lot of bad mistakes, but you're not necessarily a bad person. It is our prayerful intent at Seeing Hearts as a community to be a part of the community effort to reach out to these individuals and say, brother, I believe in you. I believe you can do this. And you know why? Because you've illustrated a desire to change your life and we see that in you and we think you can be something else. And we're going to come alongside you with our arm around you and we're going to help you get that job. And we're going to put you in the shuttle van here and we're going to take you to the dentist and we're going to take you to the doctor. And we're going to be a part of your family coming back in the picture. And we're going to see spouses that have been disconnected come back into their lives. We're going to see children re-enter the picture. It's going to be a glorious thing. And at the same time, we're going to invest heavily in a structure over here on the corner of Beach Street and Sycamore Street. And we're going to make this building that sits now empty and dilapidated, we're going to shine it up like a diamond. And it's not going to be just about the men that are in this facility. We're going to be a part of that neighborhood. I submit to you now that within six months of us opening our doors, people in that neighborhood will see that we're not something to be afraid of, that quite the opposite. We carry the banner of the power of God to change a life and for people to, again, or for the first time ever, be productive members of society. And we are going to be beacons of the human spirit. And I appeal to all of you, those of you that stand in opposition to us for whatever reasons, which I respect differing opinions, don't stand in opposition to us. Come alongside us. Come alongside us as we here in Boyle County show others, others that are trying. Remember, this is not for people that are just walking out of an incarceration situation. These are traceable, trackable people that we know are putting forth a sincere effort to change their lives. Come alongside us as we're there for those people. Their lives can change. I know they can because I'm one of them. Thank you all. I appreciate it very much. Thank you, Board.
I know there are several people here who want to speak tonight. I certainly don't want to cut anybody off as to the length of time they have, but we do need to keep the remarks as pertinent to the situation as possible. And how many are here to speak in favor of this? If you'd raise your hand, if you want to speak, only if you want to speak. Okay, I see about four or five hands. I'm going to take them one at a time. Please don't just get up and repeat what the person before you said. We've heard it once and hearing it four times won't help. I can assure you of that. We want to hear new things, something that's different than what somebody else has said. So Barry, I'm going to start with you, if you want to come up. State your name.
Barry Harmon.
And do you swear in a firm statement you're about to make or true and correct?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you all for this opportunity. We all know there's a drug problem. We know there's crime problems. I've lived with it for sixteen years and I think we are making some really good headway in our city, in our county, through our physical courts. They have put forth a great effort to open the I O P house on Third Street. Many doubted that, but they are really good neighbors. The building is kept immaculate. It's been totally restored inside. And the guys that did that, I stayed with five state inmates that worked for three weeks on the interior of that building, painting, repairing and doing all that work. And they had skills that they hadn't used for a while. And I've seen people that have changed, really have changed. I've seen those that didn't change after they got out of jail. And I always ask a person when they leave the jail from there, I said, you coming back? And they said, nope. I said, what's your plan? I don't need one. In two, three weeks, they're back. This is a plan. This is a plan that men can turn to, whether it's from our county jail, once they finish their sentence, or the prison at North Point. Just a real quick testimony and I'll hush up and get to preaching. But there was a young man, I met John Higgins at North Point, and I was there nine and a half years as a volunteer staff chaplain. And John got to talking about Shoney's. He'd never been to Shoney's in his life and he was set to serve twenty-five years. And John said, I heard at Shoney's, they have bacon on a buffet that's stacked this high. Now, I couldn't, I couldn't relate that because I've been, yeah, Shoney's does have that, John. He said, I can't wait. I can't wait to get to Shoney's. He said, I love bacon better than anything. And the day that John Higgins was released, he came to my house, pulled up on a Saturday in the driveway. His sister had him and his wife. And when, when he came, came up to the door, we hugged and everything and he said, we got to go on, I can't stay with about ten minutes. I said, okay. And so John leaves and he goes to Shoney's, that's where he goes first, up in Frankfurt. And, and John went and sat down and when they came, the waitress to the table, she came out and laid their silverware on the table and it freaked him out. Because in prison, at North Point, you got your own silverware. You picked it up, no one else touched it. Someone else was touching his eating utensils. He got up and went to the restroom, the men's room, and he went in there. And he told me, he said, I couldn't come out. Said, my sister finally came in and when she came in, she found John in the corner and he was sitting there crying. John wasn't ready for release. He had no preparation. Fortunately, he had his sister, he had his wife, and they did get him on up to Louisville and back home and they didn't even eat that morning as much as he loved bacon. He is a, he was one that was a success story. Made it out. Was he perfect? No, none of us are. We don't meet that criteria. But I'm all about people. I'm all about people. And that's what I think this is really about, people. And that's what I stand for. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone outside that wants a seat, there's some seats here in the front and I see some five or six empty seats, so you're welcome to come take a seat if you want. Sir, you raised your hand. Would you like to come up, please? State your name.
Roger Fox.
And do you swear in a firm statement you're about to make or true and correct?
I do.
Okay.
First of all, I'd just say thank you.
I'd like to say, try to keep your comments to three or four minutes if you can, because we have a lot of people.
I'll try to talk fast.
Not too fast.
I'd like to thank you guys for this opportunity first and foremost. I know how important that a program like this is. May the first, two thousand and fifteen, I was released from the Rotary Correctional Complex in La Grange. When I was released, I was, I was lost. My family didn't want anything to do with me. I hadn't seen my kids in, in two years. I was unemployable, you know, and really I had no hope. The only person that would, that would take me was a housing program in Lexington, right on, right on UK's campus. The only people in the entire state that wanted me in their house, you know. I went there and like I said, I was, I was a mess. I didn't know how to live successfully and I did not know how to live responsibly. As I made my way through this program, a couple of things happened. I became involved in a recovery community. I got a job cooking hamburgers and french fries. That was my first job. And eventually, over time, I started to see my children on the weekend. I stuck in that house, you know, I stayed. I did everything that they asked me to do. I was determined to have a different life, even if I didn't know for sure that I was going to be able to. So a year later, I graduated that program and, and I kind of stuck around that, you know, I stuck around there and eventually I went to work for them and I kind of managed one of their houses there for about six months. And my boss calls and he gives me an opportunity. He says, how do you feel about going home and running an outpatient program for us down in Danville? And I thought, wow, this is going to be great. I get to go back to my community where I'm from and give back to men and women who are just like me, who, who've never stood a chance and who've been written off by society, you know? And, and I got to come here and do that. And we work exclusively with men and women coming from the detention center. And I can't tell you how many times when we sit down with these, with these people, because that's what they are, we sit down with these people and I say, what's the barrier? What's stopping you from recovering? I don't have, I don't have any support. I don't have anybody that loves me. I don't have structure and accountability. And I think back to my time coming home from prison and how blessed I was to have that opportunity in that program, you know. Today, because of that program and what I learned in that program, I just bought my kids a house and they live with me, you know? I'm employable. I'm involved in the recovery community. I love this community. And I think that, you know, as you can see, I'm extremely passionate because I know what it's like to be that person, but I also know what it's like to go through the, through the transformation and to be a different person, you know? And by, by voting yes on this, we are giving opportunities to people in this county to change their lives, to reunite families and to restore what they've lost. And you have the power to do that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Raise your hand again. Okay, sir, the green.
Could you state your name? My name is Pastor Dave Harding.
Dave, I'm sorry, your last name?
Harding.
Harding. Do you swear in a firm, sir, that the statement you're about to make or true and correct?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
I've got a bachelor's degree in Biblical Studies and in Christian theology. I am the former chair of the Bluegrass Reentry Council, presently the vice chair. I work on a full-time basis with people who are coming out of addiction and who come, coming out of prison. And I myself spent twenty years in the Kentucky Department of Corrections.
Excuse me, could you speak in the mic?
Yes.
I see people at the back.
Certainly, I'm so sorry. And, you know, I also carry the label of ex-con, ex-convict. And I know that there are, you know, I'm sitting in the back of the room and I can see facial expressions of those who are presently closed to the idea of giving permission for a ministry such as this one to have, to have their way. And so I just, you know, I could stand up here and talk for an hour and I'm not going to do it, but I'd like to encourage those who are so closed to the idea of living across the street from a facility like this, to consider that the prevalent thought is that this ministry is going to take in sons, this ministry is going to take in fathers. My experience throughout all the years, twenty years of my life spending, most of the men, ninety percent of all the men I met just wanted to get out, just wanted to get a job, just wanted to get returned back to their families, just wanted to get to start over, wanted to be able to go to Pizza Hut when they can or go to Shoney's when they want And these, and I really like what Wilkinson had to say there, but is that this is a measurable thing. I know we're not repeating ourselves, but I'd like to invite, if you're, if you live close to where this facility is, and of course, I don't know who you are, I'd like to invite you to stop in at any local jail and talk to the jailer, talk to chaplain, and get a tour, meet, meet some of these individuals in person. Look into their eyes and see the, see the humanity, see the desire to be greater than they are. And what they need is someone to invest in them, to say that they're valuable, that they're precious and they're important. When I was released from prison, I had the best support system. And for, for two years, I stumbled all the time. I didn't know what I was doing. I didn't know what I was doing. The culture shock was so intense after 20-year sentence, that getting out of bed was hard. And if I'd had a structured program that I could have stepped into, it would have changed because I run a structured program. I'm the pastor of the Ree Center Foundation in Lancaster, Kentucky. We will be opening a, a sober living home, a Phase Two. And hopefully by the end of next year, we'll be, the end of this year, we'll be opening a rehab, Medicaid-millable rehab. We just have to get past some roadblocks. But let me just invite those who have never had the chance to consider what it would be like to have a son or a daughter, to have a husband who's made some really bad choices and found themselves in a situation that they would have rather not have been in. And now they're getting out and they don't have the resources, they don't have the housing, they don't have the jobs that they need to make it. The recidivism rate in the state of Kentucky is outrageous. But there are statistics, you just Google them, about what it means to have a home when you walk out of prison. And how that recidivism rate, it drops, drops down to something that we don't even want to talk about, it's, it's so low. So recidivism fills our prisons up with returning inmates. Transitional living homes, sober living homes chop that number drastically. And in this nation, we're talking about an incarceration rate that is unbelievable. And we can do something about it in Danville, Kentucky. We can, we can, we can do what other people are only talking about doing, is make an impact. And if you are blessed to live around a place that is going to make an impact, not only for the community, but for the kingdom of God, folks, it's worth fighting for. It's worth investing in. And I, and every single time, I know my time's up. I did it in 30 seconds. Every single place that has ever opened up had opposition. Every one, whether it's a rehab, whether it's a halfway house, a transitional, they always had opposition. But I promise you, a year afterwards, they changed their mind. And this is something else that, talk to any rehab, any halfway house, any transitional place, go visit the communities. They make a difference and it matters. Thank you.
Raise your hands, ma'am, in the back.
Hi. My name is Dorothy Acres Green.
And raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm the statements you're about to make are true and correct?
I sure do.
Go ahead.
I probably have two interests in this. I probably one day would have voted against this. But I have a handsome grandson that is in a jail in Tennessee right now, probably waiting on a prison sentence. Now, we never thought it would come to our home. But I tell you here today, it affects every family in here. We don't want to admit it. I didn't. Our family wouldn't have dreamed of this, but it happened. My prayer is, when he gets out, that there will be a place for him to go where he will be, where he can become a productive citizen. That's my prayer. So hats off to anybody, this is not an easy job to do, is to stand up and say, we're going to make a difference. But these houses, after they've, most of them, I think, have had to get their GEDs. They have had to take anger management. They've had to take all kinds of classes. Now, we need jobs. We need people to open up their hearts for jobs. Now, I have another interest in this. Eighty, about 80 years ago, West Danville was my home. I love that neighborhood. I drive over there just ever other week or so. And I say, there's my house, there's Granny's, and all my aunts and uncles, and the Selbys, there was a gang of Selbys over there. And I tell you what, when I walk, when I go through there now, my heart, I could cry because of the dilapidations and the ways, some of the properties that I love so well. We were a unusual neighborhood. If I was at a woman's house and her child got in trouble, I got a whip in there too. It was just that, we loved. When one didn't have groceries, everybody chipped in and we saw that they had groceries. We saw if they needed house repairs and they didn't have coal. Yeah, we had coal and the ice man come around back then. But we provided. That's what a neighborhood do, does. I hope West Danville, I, my prayer is, see West Danville come back to what it used to be. A loving, caring neighborhood. And I'm asking the people that you may not under, understand how you feel, because I've been through that. But like I said, my prayer is that my grand, my handsome, beautiful grandson will get this chance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. State your name, please.
Pastor James M. Hahn.
Okay. And raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm the statements you're about to make are true and correct?
I do, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
I am currently the Chairman of the Hope Network. After spending 27 and a half years serving in the Air Force, serving my country, and another two years as a defense contractor, I came back to Danville in 2014, or 2015. I was privileged to get connected with some of our community leaders here about giving back. I went to the detention center one day, visiting my cousin. He's, he was in this vicious cycle of being in and out, being in and out. And he told me about a place called Jubilee Jobs in Lexington, Kentucky. Gary Chatterster and I went to Jubilee Jobs that February, and we're talking about giving ex-inmates, ex-comics a chance to come back into our community. And I asked the question, after being out of this community for 31 years, what can we do to get something like that in Boyle County? What can we do as a people to give people, realize that people deserve a second chance? I never did drugs because if the military would have got kicked out. So God gave me a whole different perspective of ministry about giving back. So right now, currently in Danville, Boyle County, the inmates that are coming out of the detention center, come to a six-month program, court ordered through Judge Dotson's Court, to the Shepherd's House. I volunteer my time there daily, at least four times a week, teaching them resume building, job skills, dressing for success. And I just want to share some statistics that happened over the last year. The Shepherd's House in Boyle County, we're doing this in our county, to give people a second chance. Out of the 90 clients that we had, 24 active, at this particular time, 23 of those graduated, 43 was discharged. So those that were not doing what they were supposed to be doing, discharged, and they have a felony flight affidavit signed to get them back into jail. 78% of those that graduated remained sober. 12 of them have full-time jobs. 12 of them has full-time jobs. 88% of those passed a drug test, and then four of those completed their GED. So I'm a living witness, when we come together as a community and we say, individuals deserve a second chance, we have the statistic to say, it's worth the investment. Because they're coming back into our community, they're paying their taxes, and I just believe, if we continue to do this as a community, we can keep giving back. One of our quotes in the Air Force was, service before self, excellence in all we do, and integrity above all. And that's what we're trying to instill in these individuals, that is service before self, excellence in all we do, and integrity before we all. So we just hope that you guys would consider this and vote yes.
Thank you. Any, yes, sir.
Brian Wolford.
Okay. And you swear and affirm the, the statements you're about to make are true and correct?
Yes, ma'am. I'm a retired narcotics detective. Retired from the Sheriff's Department. I'm currently the Chief Deputy to Boyle County Detention Center. The last six years of my career in law enforcement, I spent working as an undercover detective. I worked narcotics. I was sworn federally with the DEA and also the Kentucky State Police. So I spent my time with people that sell drugs and abuse drugs. Of course, my job was to make the case to put them in jail. As I was kind of maturing through my career, I started to realize something. Most of the folks we're dealing with are people that didn't grow up with a mom and dad that got up and went to work every day. Not that there's a perfect family, but a healthy family. They're not gangsters. Not everybody that, that deals drugs or is involved in drugs is a gangster. Yes, there's those that are, but it's maybe 10%. The others are just basically trying to survive and battling an addiction. 10 years ago, if you would have told me that I would have been, would, would not, well, went from locking them up and putting them in jail to being an advocate for them, I would have laughed at you. But I've had the great pleasure with working with folks like Andrew and Roger and, and others in the room. Like, it's going back to what I was saying, most of these folks, they were left to fend for themselves at an early age. And like kids and teenagers do, they made poor choices. But the poor choices they made led them into addiction. I'm a big proponent for treatment. Treatment works. And what he's trying to do is a vital, it, it's an imperative part of what we need in our community. It's a missing piece of the puzzle. I spend time at ASAP. I'm a board member with Hope Network. I spend a lot of time in this. Treatment works. And, and the worst part these guys have coming out of jail is the stigma of incarceration. Because, just because they've been to jail, well, they're, they're a bad person. They're, they're evil, they're, you know, they're going to hurt you, they're going to, that's not true. 80% of the folks in jail are battling a mental illness or substance abuse issues or both. Yes, there's 20% of people that's in our jail that needs to be locked up because they're mean, and, and they would hurt any one of us for, for whatever reason. The folks that's going to be, that, that Andrew's going to be providing a, a service for are not those folks. Their folks, like he said, you know, the, the foothill of life has just come down on them. And when they go to jail, it just knocks them further and further behind. If we don't give them an opportunity and take a chance on some of them, they're going to stay down. They're, they're never going to get back up to level. I mean, he told you what it was like trying to get a job. I couldn't imagine. Growing up, I had a father, he battled addiction. I lost my father, he had a relapse and I lost him my senior year in college. And he was going to actually be a freshman in college. He, he had a relapse. So I've grown up on both sides of this. I know what it's like to have a, a parent who has battled addiction. And I've seen it on the professional side, because I spent the majority of my career, 20 years, working narcotics in one form or fashion. Like I said, I've worked undercover. You know, I could say, yes, you know, the very first drug deal I went to do, they tried to rob me. And most people would have been like, well, I need to go find another profession or something, but not me. I, I liked it. But you know, that's, but that is such a small incident with the type of people we're dealing with. The majority, the majority of the cases I worked, I never had a problem. Because they're just battling addiction. The drugs changes their mind. I mean, it literally rewires the brain. It takes time for the brain to heal. Somebody cannot just walk out of jail and be healthy. They need what he's offering. Our community, to overcome the deficit we're in from the opioid epidemic, we need this. This is a vital part. And here's the thing about it, it's going to add value to the neighborhood. It's not going to make the neighborhood go down. These people are going to be monitored. They're going to be supervised. They're going to be given skills, they're going to be trained. They're going to take a property that's dilapidated and rebuild it. They're going to make it a shining spot in that neighborhood. You know, it's a great neighborhood. And not only that, these people are going to be able to go and find jobs and employment because they're going to be able to build some skills and training. And that's part of what Pastor Hahn does with the Hope Network, is he goes out and finds businesses that are willing to offer these folks an opportunity to rebuild their lives. So this all fits in with what the entire community is trying to do in, in rebuilding our community.
Thank you. Yes, sir. I will get everybody, I promise. Someone's coming. I just take to the hand that I see first. State your name, sir.
James Durham.
And raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm the statements you're about to make are true and correct?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So I'm just here to speak on behalf of this, in, in the sense that I recognize that there's anxiety about the, the property value situation, will this hurt, help at the property value? I'm a real estate investor. Lots of people in this room know, I own lots of real estate, so I think I'm informed on the real estate conversation. On top of that, I, I just want to say that, lend my personal assurance here that, that through, I, I can speak, I can say this on their behalf, I've talked to them. Jess and Angela Carell are, are going to give incredibly generously to this project. Angela actually grew up across the street in West Danville. This is a, a passion of hers. If you're familiar with the work they, they've done in Stanford, basically, Stanford's been remodeled by their, them personally. They have great passion for this, and my wife and I have great passion for this. This, this building will literally have hundreds of thousands of dollars invested into it. I can attest to that, where it will come from. I will be one of those people. So this will be truly a, from a real estate perspective, this will be one of the nicest buildings in, in this neighborhood when it's done. I think you can see the things that I've invested in, in this community and know that we do, I do first-class work. There is no doubt that the Carells do extraordinary work when they touch things. And so I, I just say that, so just from a real estate perspective, this building will be extraordinary when it's finished. And today, it is offensively bad. The fact that it hasn't been condemned is a, is questionable on what's happened on the city side. I've been in the building, I know how bad it is. And so, and the building's been for sale for a long time and we bought it for nothing. So, you know, it is a, I can just assure you that from a, from a property value perspective, people will be unhappy, I have a feeling, because their property taxes will go up as a result of the work we invested into this neighborhood. So, and so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, who's next? Your name?
Ann Ferguson.
Try to speak into the microphone.
Ann Ferguson.
Okay, and raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm the statements you're about to make are true and correct?
Yes, I do. After the meeting Wednesday, Thursday, Charles and I drove around West Danville. We drove out Sycamore and out Beach. And it appears to be a nice neighborhood, a stable neighborhood of single-family homes, some duplexes. And it has, within its surrounds, at least four churches, four, I think, that ought to be inclusive. There is a... There is a convenience store and a gasoline station in the confines. It's in walking distance of downtown Danville. You can walk out Beach Street and across Parable Road into the park. And you can, if you want to, walk the other direction to the shopping center across the bypass. So I think that community has a good bit to offer if there should be such a rehab facility there. Charles looked at that building, and he said, "Anything would be better than this." It's a terrible eyesore. And if it can be rehabilitated, which two or three people have indicated, I don't know, but these people know whether it can be rehabilitated and put to good use. I'm not going to go into any discussion of how addiction has affected me. I think that if we were to ask in this room, the hands that would be raised by people who have been affected by addiction would be overwhelming.
Ma'am, you're gonna have to speak into the microphone that came here if you don't. I heard you, just go ahead.
Two weeks ago, Charles and I were at a literary festival in West Virginia, and we listened to Anna Sale talk about her podcasts. We listened to Nikki Giovanni, read her poetry and comment on it, and comment on other items of concern to her. And the third person who was on the program was David Schiff. I did not know David Schiff. Charles did not know David Schiff. We sat for an hour and a half and listened to him talk about how he had been able to save his son. It was a period of years. It was an investment in time, energy, and money that was overwhelming. David Schiff has written a book, written two books really, one that's called Beautiful Any John Lennon fans here? Beautiful Boy. His Beautiful Boy is now a success, even though he still deals with the problems of his addiction to alcohol and meth. Beautiful Boy comes out as a film this fall, and I hope it'll come to Danville. I hope you all will get to see that. And I just want to encourage you to give real, I know you do, give really serious consideration to what this facility could mean. And I think that that community really could be a showcase for helping people get back into the normal flow.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak for? Ma'am, I saw your hand first. If you'd come in, I'll get you next.
My name is Bethel Wade.
Okay, and raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm the statements you're about to make are true and correct?
I do.
Can you briefly tell us your concerns or your support?
I live in the neighborhood. I grew up in the neighborhood. And I have asked here before, "Why don't you bring some stores and things on the other side of town? Do something that's gonna benefit us." I don't have a problem with the rehab program because my grandson had a few weeks and he's fine. I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is you putting it in my neighborhood around the corner.
Ma'am, this is in support of. Did you realize that? This is people that are speaking in support of the program.
The people that don't have support, don't have time to speak.
We'll have time for them too, but all these right now...
So I have to wait until you get through with the people that's...
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we need to hear all of those in support. Okay. Before we go any further, I'm gonna have about a five-minute break. We have some members of the board who would like a quick break. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting back on the record, please. We're back on the record. Sir, if you want to come to the podium. State your name, please.
Brian Montgomery.
And raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm the statements you're about to make are true and correct?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I pastor to the Church of God on Fourth Street here in Danville, born and raised in Danville. I was raised at 1210 West Walnut Street in West Danville. It's a very important part of my life, of my foundation. I'm also a board member for Hope Network. I would just like for it to be stated, as James did a few minutes ago, we, and Hope Network jumped several obstacles about three years ago about bringing change to this community in a positive way when it comes to addiction. And thankfully, we've been able to make some progress. Matter of fact, a newspaper article just in the Advocate Measure a couple of weeks ago gave credit to the Hope Network in alignment with the government agencies such as ASAP and others, that the jail population in Bull County had dropped significantly because of the work that we are doing between the faith-based and the government agencies locally to make a change. I also serve not just Hope Network, I'm also listed on the Board of Directors for San Harms. My church on, when I moved back to Danville eight years ago to pastor, I had in my eyes, my mind, one way that God was gonna build the church down here. We are currently experiencing growing pains, we're out of parking on Sundays, we're looking at properties next to us to try to expand our ministry. But when I look in my congregation now, it's built upon people who have come out of incarceration, for those that's come out of drug rehabilitation. Matter of fact, Barry Harmon and Brian Walford, who was here just a few moments ago, when I walk into the Bull County Jail, they laugh at me sometimes, and they say, "We're gonna take you to your office, Pastor Brian, because I'm in and out of there so much." It's just the nature of the calling that God has placed on my life here in this city. We have made tremendous, tremendous advancements that are noted recently in the media in this town of things that we've done. I understand there's people here that live in West Danville, and me and my wife had the conversation the other day, we don't, by any means, don't think your opinion matters because we believe that it does. But we have, and we have an opportunity here to revitalize a property, to control who comes in and who doesn't, who gets rejected and who gets accepted. I heard a statistics last week as I attended the ARC graduation in Garrett County, which ARC is the largest addiction recovery facilities in the state of Kentucky, all over eastern Kentucky. They gave the statistic last week that when an individual gets out of incarceration, if they can get help within the first year of getting a job, a car, and a place to live, 73% of them do not go back into incarceration. That is an astounding number. And so, I'm just asking you as a pastor, as a faith-based leader in this community, as a member of different committees who are trying to lead the charge here in this community to let you know that this is needed, this is a great facility. I went to this, and many others here have got the same testimony, this facility, when it was a laundromat, when it was a grocery store, I've been in this building my entire life. And there is noted a few minutes ago, there's three or four churches already in this area. As a pastor, we don't see this any different than what we do on a Sunday, Monday through Saturday basis. It's a ministry center. And if there's already those in the community, and we're willing to revitalize, do amazing work to this piece of property, we just feel like that it would be, it would be the best interest of the city of Danville as we try to make a difference. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's wanting to speak in favor of the rehab center? Your name?
Tina Carney.
Tina what?
Carney.
Okay, thank you. Raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm the statements you're about to make are true and correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Initially, I wasn't planning to say anything, I just came to listen, but I tried to claim that I was gonna be this neutral party, neither for or against, but I live directly across the street from this place, so it is a big eyesore at the moment. So, me thinking, there's pros and cons to everything, my biggest thing was the kids that run up and down this street. I have four teenage boys at home, and to think that it's gonna, you know, affect their ability to play outside, but the more I sit and listen and think about the fact that my two boys, their father is in and out of prison, in and out of places, and he can't seem to get any act right, and that's what I call it, because, whether it's because he doesn't want to, or he hasn't had the opportunity, whatever that may be, my thought is, if I can help someone else's father get back into their life, because I can't seem to do anything with my own kid's father, but if I could be a part of that, maybe that would help someone else's family. Because, I mean, I have a husband, you know, we have four children together, so it's not like they don't have a father in their life, but it's, I'm just saying that everybody, myself, I could have been one of the statistics as well. I chose to turn my life around. I didn't have to go through all of that, but some people do unfortunately need those things, that structure and that support. I did have a family that supported me, however, and like I said, I live right across the street. So I'm even thinking, no, I'm not a perfect person now. I like to sit on my front porch and drink beer, I'm gonna say that. And I'm thinking, if this comes in here, how am I gonna sit on my front porch and drink beer? But, it's not all about me. I mean, I, you know, but here's the thing, I was in a facility, a rehab facility for nine months. There was a liquor store on every corner. So, it's not about where you go to get your support system, it's about your willingness to want to change. And from what I've heard, and I talked to Andrew for probably an hour at my house, it's not just gonna be anybody. And like, people do deserve second chances, I feel very strongly for that. And I just think that, like I said, there's pros and cons to anything, and I would like to see something come good of this. I know my neighbor is probably boiling over there, because he is in a disagreement, but I just, I felt compelled to say that, and, because like I said, the kids, that was my main concern, is these children, but I believe that it's not just gonna be any, any random person coming in here, and I think that, I think that it would be a good thing, and that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? Okay, we're gonna go to opposition. Ms. Wade, I'll let you go first. You're already sworn, so we won't have to do that again.
Thank you. All I'm trying to say is, I was born and raised out there. Nothing has changed out there except for putting some apartments where my grandmother lived, which is inviting a whole lot of uncanny people. We already have enough problem out there, and I'm a homeowner. I don't have a problem whatsoever with a rehab. I'll even work it, free if I have to, volunteer, but not around the corner from me. Would you like to have that around the corner from you, or in y'all's backyard? That's the question. And to me, what should be said is, do you want it there, or do you not want it there? I've been there all my life too. And it, what you mean by change? It's always been the same. We don't have anyone coming out checking waters, we don't have anybody checking the streets. It's always been the same. I ran to that little place when it was a laundromat. I ran to that place when it was a store. And I don't think that you ought to put anything up there unless you're gonna benefit us. And that's not benefiting us. Put this thing up, you know what I'm saying? You could have a rehab, but out of all of this town, why are you trying to bring it to West Danville? That's my question. Take it somewhere else. You ain't brought nothing else out there. So take it somewhere else. And I am a homeowner, and I don't want it there.
Thank you, ma'am. Who else? State your name.
Cam Johnson.
Gonna have to raise the mic up.
Okay. Cam Johnson.
Okay. Do you swear and affirm, raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm the statements you're about to make are true and correct?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, well, all the testimony's been real good and everything, but the opposition is not against their ministry, not at all. Everybody agreed that everybody needs a second chance and all that. And majority of the people are speaking here for it. They don't live in West Danville. I've been in West Danville, either lived there, owned property for 54 years. And just like Ms. Wade, the same thing. I remember going to the laundromat and riding bikes in the parking lot in my day, but I'm a fact finder, and I'm gonna give you the, some demographics on North Point Training Center. Couldn't get anything on Bull County Jail. But, the information comes from the Kentucky Department of Corrections, and they saying out there, at North Point, they have 1,233 inmates. And it has a list of their offenses. They have 151 drug offenses, miscellaneous two, other 23, property offense 476, sex offenses 295, violent crime 286. And so, this is the pool he's pulling from, North Point and Bull County Jail. So I know he's gonna have some type of structure or something as far as deciding who he gets, but, that's the pool he's pulling from. And we got something to, the reincarnation rate from North Point, one to two years, 34%. One to three years, 46%. So if they have 16 inmates there, between the first and second year, you're probably looking at four to five that's gonna reoffense again. And these are statistics that I didn't put together, that's what's online, it's free to everybody. And I'm pretty sure they're not lying, it's numbers they track and everything. So you take one in three years, say they have 16 people, 46%, you're probably looking about seven of them will reoffense. Like I said, it's not a question of their ministry, everybody probably agree with that. It's just putting it in our neighborhood, bringing that environment there. I mean, we have, you have Bull County High School, you have Millennium Park, if you go, you got Cowan Street Park, then you have, you have the, I think Sunrise, the Children Home over there. And I met a friend, we walked yesterday, and we got some, did a petition, and we didn't get to walk at all. I spent three hours walking Beach Street. Three hours because I'm meeting people that I knew lived there, and they invited me into their home, kitchen table, and we talked about it, and I heard there were some lived out there that was forward. I probably got 25 people on my sheet, and nobody was forward. Everybody opposed, had three that was neutral. One was neutral because her son's in, is incarcerated, and she wants some home. But however, I had another, I had a friend, she walked one street, I think she went Cowan Street and down along it a little bit, probably she spent two hours. And so, we could have got more people, we had more time. First time I ever doing a petition, and I didn't realize the time that it consumed. But I didn't find anybody that was forward. And it's people that live in the community, not no outsider, live across town, disagreeing or whatever, but I think on one sheet, the last sheet, 13 people, that was people from the outside, that their children do play at Cowan Street Park and at Millennium Park. So those are people from the outside, but everybody else lived in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Your name?
Ann Clay Rush.
Okay. And raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm... Do you swear and affirm the statement you're about to make or true and correct?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I am a homeowner on 1219 Sycamore Street, which is right next door. Stand up. Raise your hand if you have kids. Do you live next door? Do you? I'm looking at you, sir. Do you live next door?
Ma'am? Ma'am, you can't ask questions of the audience, I'm sorry.
I'm just asking.
I know, but that's.
No one here is a fortune teller. My mother was raised at 125 Beach Street. My grandparents lived in that house for 65 years. I do not want to see this here. I do not want to walk outside and be worried that someone may or may not relapse. I have no problem with the ministry. I don't. I think everybody deserves a second chance. But I absolutely do not want a bunch of ex-convicts standing next to my house when I'm trying to raise my 10-year-old son. There are a lot of children that live in that neighborhood, and this is not the place for this. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am? Ma'am, in the back?
My name is Angelia Lewis.
I'm sorry?
Angelia.
Louis?
Louis, yes.
Do you swear and affirm the statement you're about to make or true and correct?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Obviously, I was not dressed for this meeting. I do live down the street. I'm not a long-lived citizen of Danville, Kentucky. I am a transplant. We came from Louisville. The interesting part of this is that I came here for correctional nursing. I am a correctional nurse. I have been a correctional nurse for running 11 years now. Three years with criminally insane, and then to North Point, I've been to the Boyle County Jail, I've been to the Jefferson County Louisville Metro Jail. My son walks home every evening, right past there. The school bus drops him off at the end of the street, and he walks past there. And I was just grabbing the other day because a mouse came over from there. I know he did. You know, I know a mouse came from that building. I don't like that building either. But I'm here to attest that I have been on both sides. I once, as a young girl, was in trouble myself. I did not go to a transitional facility. I just turned my life around and had to go in front of judge after judge and do a lot of work myself. And now I am a prisoner, so that's, there you go. But I hear conversations as they're about to be set free. I hear them all the time. I believe in rehabilitation. I feel like I'm a progressive thinker, and I love Christ, and I love ministry too. But I do not want this down the street for my children, because unfortunately, I do live in their minds because I have to.
I understand.
So.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. State your name, sir.
My name is Richard Overstreet. I live and own at 203 Beach Street.
Okay, and do you swear and, raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm the statement you're about to make or true and correct?
Yes, I do.
All right.
I've lived there, 203 Beach Street, going on six years now, and I've looked at that building, and it's been there, and I've seen it fall down little piece at a time, guttering, but the proposal to use this building for what it's being proposed to be used for, it's not, this is a residential area. The statutes are clear, as they were placed up on the board there, as what the law says this area can be used for. It's squeaking by under a bed and breakfast. If that's a bed and breakfast, so is North Point, because that's where they're coming from, and so is LaGrange. I don't see either one of those being a bed and breakfast. But that's what we're talking about doing here in my neighborhood. Like the lady said, there's a bus stop right there on that corner. I see kids gather there every morning to get on a bus. That ain't the best situation that it could be. And I know I'm not against anybody's ministry. Everybody deserves a second chance. I've had to have a second chance in life before, and I'm deeply appreciative and grateful for that second chance. But there's a way to do anything the right way, and I don't see planting convicts in the middle of a residential area as being the right way to do it. A couple of months ago, this governing body had the opportunity, out on Perival Road, there was a church that wanted to open a drug rehab facility on 25 acres that belonged to them. It was denied because of the objection of one or two neighbors that lived down by the road. We've got far more than one or two neighbors here. And, you know, what's going, what's going to be put in that building is not a bed and breakfast, no shape, form, or fashion. And once again, like I said, statutorily, it's clear, to me it is. And I have to ask each one of you people on this governing body to do your duty statutorily. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Don't everybody speak at once? Yes, ma'am?
My name's Diana Wilson, and I live on Beach Street.
And raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm the statement you're about to make or true and correct?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I've lived there, my husband and I, for 33 years. We raised our son. He's grown now, and it's a good neighborhood. And, you know, it is getting a little, you know, raggedy, but not only our children that we worry about, we have a lot of elderly people in our neighborhood. And I'm not against the ministry. It's just that I know from not personal, but family experience, rehab is so hard for people. And all it takes is one time, you know, them to fail, maybe rob one of our old people or harm somebody. And because, you know, we've heard all the success stories. I'm sure there's failures. And it would just take one failure to put our older people in danger, our children, or even any of us. So I'm just against it.
Okay, thank you. Any, yes, sir? State your name.
Henry Overstreet.
Okay, and do you swear and affirm the statement you're about to make or true and correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, sir.
My name is Henry Overstreet. I'm a 39-year recovering addict, been to the penitentiary, numerous jails, but today I'm clean and sober. I would just like to reiterate to the gentlemen that said that they've been in the penitentiary, and they're going to go through the inmates and find the ones that have went to the classes and got the, the paperwork for electrician. Truth is known, they're going to them classes to get out of the cell. That's the only reason they're gone. There is some that do go now to better their self, but the majority of them, they go to get out the cell. I understand how hard it is to have support. I've been to 17 rehabs, two long-term treatments. It's, things is not going to help you until you're willing to help yourself. You can go to any halfway house or whatever you want to go to, it's not going to keep you from doing what you want to do. And that's the way I see it. And I've been in the situation in the game for years. You know, I'm not a baby at this, you know? One thing that I haven't heard, everybody's talking about like a halfway house and rehabilitation. I haven't heard anything say about there's going to be AA meetings, NA meetings, that somebody could come in and address the people that is clean and sober, that's been through what they've been through. I haven't heard that. You know, all I hear is about, you know, we're going to fix the place up, you know? But if they're, if they're concerned about the people coming over there, they should have programs in place for them to help them proceed. Yes, you need a job. Yeah, you need a car. You need all that. But if you're not clean and sober, and you got a higher power, whichever you want to choose to guide you through this situation, you're going to relapse. The biggest majority of the people in the pen got drug problems. If you don't address that drug problem, you ain't, you, you're through. Y'all have a good day. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else? Yes. You were so short, I couldn't totally see you. And I know that problem. Hey, off the record seconds, if you've got a jacket in your office, Donna's freezing up here. Yeah, Donna is freezing.
Nobody else cold?
I'm cold.
It's wasteful.
David's cold. I don't have one in my car, but Jenny's looking, so. Jenny's looking. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Tanya Eversole.
Okay, and raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm the statement you're about to make or true and correct?
Yes, ma'am. I'm a single lady that lives in this neighborhood. I've raised two daughters on my own, which they are grown now, but we're a very close-knit neighborhood. We, you know, help with each other's children. You always hear it takes, you know, a lot of people to raise children, and that's what we do. There is a lot of older people in this neighborhood. But my big issue is being the, right in front of this building is a, is a place where all the children catch the bus. That's extremely, extremely scary to me. The people that have lived here all these years, that have purchased these homes, that are against this, I support them. You know, I have my home, I live on West Walnut, which is right around the corner. I lived on Beach Street for many years, so I know a lot of people on that street, worked with them, been friends with them. I do not want this here, and I'm the same as everyone else. I am a true believer in a second chance. We all have someone in our family that's been through something. I have a stepbrother that has been in and out of prison his entire life. My father passed away a few months ago, still waiting on my 57-year-old brother to finally do right. He's never done right. He's still in prison. So I've seen good things happen to people, and I've also seen the horrible things. I've seen my stepbrother get out, rob people, do things, he's addicted to drugs as well, never get the help that he needed, or he chose to never do that. The help may have been there for him, but he never chose to take that path. Like I said, when my, my father passed away, that was his one and only thing for my stepbrother to, to not do this again. He is now still in prison. So I'm also here to say that I am against this.
Okay, thank you. I thought I saw someone else raise their hand. Yes, ma'am. State your name, Terry.
Terry Bell.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm the statement you're about to make or true and correct?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I live on the corner of Nickel Street, opposite of where this is going to take place. Nickel Street, I grew up there actually 40 years ago, and I too think it hasn't changed a bit. There's a lot of widows that live up and down that street now. My mom lives with me. She's a widow. I'm a widow, and I have a 17-year-old daughter. She works nights. I have a second job. I work nights, and we come and go, and it may be as late as 11:00, 11:30, 12 o'clock. I also experienced the Isaiah House. I lived in Riverview years ago, and the Isaiah House opened out there in the La Palms home. There was a lot of controversy then. I lived on Riverside Drive. They had to walk past my house to get there. There was everything you could imagine. I am a Christian and proud of it. I love people. I love children. I've spent 18 years at Boyle County Schools. That's where I'm employed. I believe in second chances. I lost my husband to addiction from suicide at the age of 45. My best friend just celebrated five years sobriety on Friday. So I've lived with it. I've seen it destroy homes. I've seen it, successful stories, and like we said, we've heard a lot of successful stories here. I do believe that people can change. However, I'm very skeptical and very nervous. I talked to my mom and my daughter and said, if this comes, I guess I'll have to put in a security system and get a gun. I mean, my mom's there day and night. She can't drive, you know, and I am worried. I know that they have the right intentions, and I do believe in second chances. However, living with an addict, we don't know their heart and mind. And my husband was in rehab three different times, and he, he meant what he said. He wanted to quit. We had three children. I ended up raising by myself, and I know he meant that. And people sometimes mean what they say, but like another lady said, one time, one slip, one person, that's all it takes. One gentleman said, give us a chance. Well, give us a chance. It could be too late, one time too late. I know the La Palms moved out into the county somewhere, and they have a nice place out there, and they still have their home, but I don't think it needs to be right there in, in our community. I just don't, I think it's too close to the schools, and there's too many children there, too many widows. I just don't think it needs to be there.
Thank you.
So you're welcome.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Matthew Lewis.
I'm sorry?
Matthew Lewis.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm the statement you're about to make or true and correct?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I just got a couple of things to say. First and foremost, I'm all for second chances. I've been down the dark road myself, but I've witnessed firsthand what halfway houses do. Like my wife said, we just moved down here from Louisville, and I'm a welder, and we was working on all the bridges. Well, if you're coming off Jefferson Street towards Second Street, it's a nice, upstanding community, about like Beach Street here, and they put in a halfway house there, and I'm not exaggerating, within six months, it was like a completely different place. The property value had dropped, I'd say 50, 60%. It was just, it's just no good, especially in a subdivision. I mean, you would think that it would be put somewhere out away from town. We have two boys that ride the bus and have to walk up and down that street. And again, I'm a God-fearing man, and everybody does deserve a second chance, but I just, I don't know why in the world anybody would want to put that there. I mean, that's, that's just silly. But other than that, that's, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you would like, yes?
Hi, I'm Dionne Crane.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm the statement you're about to make or true and correct?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
My family's been in that neighborhood since I was two years old. I was raised there, I moved out of there, I'm back there, all these years later not wanting to be. I can agree with Ms. Wade. A lot's changed with the neighborhood. I think this could be a beautiful thing. I don't think this is a neighborhood for it. Instead of focusing on this, focus on what needs to be done to the neighborhood. Directly down the street from where he's wanting to put this, there's five empty houses that need to be condemned. One of those used to be a store, used to be apartments. Let's not pass this and just work on our own community.
Thank you.
And that's all.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm sure the board is going to have lots of questions, maybe for different people. I have a couple that I'd like to ask Mr. Wilkinson or Winfield, whichever one of you wants to answer. How close is this to the schools, the Christian Children's Home, sitting area where they have a children's program through the week? How close is this building to the school?
I'm actually not.
Sorry. I'm actually... I haven't done the measurements on how close it is. What I can say to that, and I understand the concerns there, is that there are distance requirements for any... I assume that question's tailored toward a sex offender or something like that that might be... That might, I guess, get tapped, for lack of a better word, to live here. But there are distance requirements there, and I don't think there's any intent in any way, shape, or form for Mr. Wilkinson to try to obviate that. We would be fully in compliance with those rules. And if there was somebody... If we get to it, you know, this is very, very preliminary. Just so everybody understands, if there is an issue where this is within 1,000 feet of the school, the children's home, which it very well may be, um, then it's clearly he can't have those individuals there.
I think my next question for him would be, would you accept sex offenders into the program?
No.
Okay. And you would have no objection to that being added as a condition for the usage?
No, I would not.
Okay.
Um, may I speak a little on this topic?
I just want a yes or no. That's all I need.
Okay. Uh, no, we would forego the acceptance of sex offenders into the home as a condition of... As a conditional use.
Okay. Anyone else have some questions?
I don't think it's very surprising what we're faced with here this evening. Nobody wants this sort of thing in their neighborhood, although we all feel it's a necessary kind of thing. I have a curiosity as to all the... The only thing I've really heard as to why you've chosen this property is because you got it dirt cheap. Um, I would be curious to know why, other than that, you have chosen this particular neighborhood.
Absolutely. Here, voting yours.
Gosh, there's so many things I'd love to respond to that we heard, but I know that's not what I'm here for. I canvassed Boyle County and the whole surrounding areas, uh, Stanford, Lancaster, um, Mercer County. Uh, I spent a lot of time driving around, looking... Looking for this vision, looking for a property, an area, that needed so many of the things that we intend to provide. Community value, being a part of the community. Again, this is not about just the lives inside of the home. This is about being a part of something bigger than it. This is about exhibiting to those in the greater the community that people can change, and the ones that deserve a second chance can, in fact, change. When I saw this property... I'm a big detail person. I'm a big believer in dotting the t's, uh, dotting the i's and crossing the t's. The vision was there. It's a dilapidated, rundown, falling apart, corner of a lot in a neighborhood that seems to be suffering a little bit, um, from the eyesore of it all. And what I saw was an opportunity. I saw an opportunity to invest money in this neighborhood. I saw an opportunity to help others that are sincerely trying to change their lives. I saw an opportunity to help others that are coming back into our communities, whether we like it or not. They're all around us already. They're on Main Street. They're on Beach Street, Thickemore Street. They're all around Boyle County. They're out there. We are collecting the ones that are making a sincere effort, and we are increasing their chances of success. And when I saw this facility, this is what I saw. And I saw lighting. I saw surve... Surveillance cameras. I saw landscaping. I saw a brand-new facility that people could come to that wasn't rundown, that wasn't an eyesore. And we could bring them in and say, "Hey, brother, this is your new home. We're gonna have uniform furniture in every room. There's not gonna be blankets hanging, uh, from the windows. It's not gonna be a hodgepodge effort. This is gonna be a very professional, dedicated home." And so many of these men that we accept in here will come in here for the first time ever, perhaps, and they will see uniform white sheets on the bed, uniform white bath towels. I know you guys think, "What? Bath towels?" We're gonna create a home for these people. We're gonna love them, support them, and encourage them, and bring them together in a controlled environment where we increase their chances of success.
Sir, while I appreciate all that, I don't think that goes into Donna's question of why you chose that place. I mean...
Because when I saw it, I felt in my heart what I described to you... What I described to you right now. A place that we could revitalize, serve the community, and help people change their lives.
I have a couple of questions. Are you gonna have... She has a follow-up, but... Go ahead. Your follow-up.
I would just follow up with that in terms of, it seems to me that it's going to be very costly to rehab that facility, no matter what you purchased it for.
Yes.
So I wonder why, again, you would choose such a rundown facility. Number two, do you have sustainable funding to rehab and carry this project through?
Yes. We will be, uh, again, to address the why this building. What I saw was something more important than money. I saw an opportunity to invest in the community and to invest in lives at the very same time. It's as simple as that. As far as funding goes, that's how I see it. That's from my heart, the answer I have for your question. I don't know if that registers with you, but that is my answer.
I didn't hear where the funding's coming from.
I haven't answered that part yet.
Oh, okay.
We are a 501(c)(3). Uh, there will not be investors, but there will be supporters. We have been blessed on the front end, uh, already with a handful of supporters that have generated a substantial amount of capital for us to operate. Number one, to buy the building. And number two, with some money in the bank to move forward on planning renovations and starting the fit-out of the property. One of the reasons why these initial supporters are here for the long haul, they believe in the vision, they believe in the mission of what we're trying to accomplish. Many of them have personal ties to this neighborhood. I've heard a lot of people say that, "Well, they don't live there. They don't live there." They grew up there. They care deeply about this neighborhood. And they want to see something built from the ground up that can be a beacon of the hope of helping others, and we can all be a part of serving that. Fundraising. I came back to Kentucky because my roots here are very extensive and very deep. My ability to network and to connect to people in this state is very... Is superior. And I have a list of private donors in the very short term that I will be visiting on a very professional basis with a pamphlet and brochure that we prepared, uh, on an operational basis to fund this endeavor going forward.
I haven't heard anything said about, are you having a residence director there, someone who lives in the home, to oversee and supervise?
There... It will be a trustee, if you will, um, an assistant, uh, house manager.
One of the people...
Will be identified for one of the peer group. We will have video surveillance. We will have monitoring, entering and exit, two main entrances where you have to enter a pin in every time after a curfew. So let's say our curfew is at 10 o'clock, and someone has a third shift at the... At whatever factory. They will enter in their pin to leave, and when they come back home, they will enter in their pin.
But you will use one of the residents as an in-house supervisor?
In my absence, and identifying people at the places of incarceration that don't have violent histories, that don't have crimes that would disqualify them from being able to earn a bit of trust in our home. We would have someone in my absence that would be a peer-driven accountability type of a position that I could rely on when I was at home sleeping until I came back the next morning at 6:00 a.m., along with controlling the entrances and exits. Like I said, monitoring, along with video surveillance, and along with adequate lighting.
Okay. And you're interviewing these people in the prison, and I have no idea what kind of crimes they have. Is there certain crimes that they are guilty of that you're not... That that's an automatic forfeiture of them being allowed to participate?
Well, we've already discussed the sexual offender situation, and we would forego as a conditional use that no sexual offenders would be allowed, uh, at this facility. Violent crimes, any type of extremely violent crime, um, I would have to, uh, have extensive conversations and dialogue with the people that were... Their care was entrusted to, doctors, psychiatrists, psychologists. If someone, when they were an 18-year-old boy, stole a car and wrecked the car and got into some sort of a violent altercation with somebody, and now it's 30 years later, and they've never had one single disciplinary report during their 30-year sentence, they have taken the classes, and whether it's to get out of their sails or not, God bless them, at least they're doing something. A lot of guys sit on the inside and play dominoes and cards all day long and run their hustles. So at least they're showing some type of a motivation, some type. And we have to applaud that a little bit. I would take under advisement any type of a... At North Point or Boyle County Detention Center, I would talk extensively with the people that have been taking care with them. The psychologists on staff there, the nurses, the warden or assistant warden. And we would weed out the people that we believed were capable of coming to a facility like this and taking the first step of being re-entered into society where we believe there's minimal risk involved, uh, and bringing them into a controlled environment like that and increasing their chances of success.
Are you going to require that they be in counseling as well as programs like Celebrate Recovery and...
I did want to touch on that.
AA, whatever.
I... We will have weekly support meetings. We're not going to be, uh, we all know this by now, a clinical addiction treatment center. If someone needs ongoing in-house addiction treatment, this is not the place for them. We will have, unfortunately, so many people that are incarcerated had had struggles with addiction, alcohol, drugs, whatnot. We will have weekly support meetings. We will have Celebrate Recovery. Us being a faith-based organization, they will... That is the Christ-centered 12-step program. It will be led by trained volunteers. I'm sure I will be a part of that, too. We also will connect our residents with resources in the community that already exist. For instance, Shepherd's House is an intensive outpatient, um, addiction treatment program. Pretty sure that some of our guys in residency at Seeing Hearts will be enrolled in the Shepherd's House as well. That is a distinct possibility. We will have life management skill and discipline classes once weekly. I've taught many of these myself in county jails and in prisons. Basic fundamental life skills, how to balance a checkbook, how to interview for a job, how to prepare a personal budget. Vital, vital, basic core skills that everyone needs to survive in the world today. Plus, you have guys that have been down five or 10 years, or maybe even more. In terms of technology, our world has changed so much and is changing so fast in a very small amount of time. Uh, we will address all of these technological advances that have been made and bring them... Some people don't know what email is. Some people don't know what an ATM is because they've been incarcerated for so long.
I know you're going to make them available. I understand that. But my question more is, are you going to require that they be involved in one or more of the programs? I mean, I'm there. I say no. I just don't want to do this. I don't need it.
If you have a history of addiction, you will be required to be involved with one of those programs. If you are a resident of Seeing House Transition Home, period, you will be involved in our life management skills and disciplines classes. That is non-negotiable.
Clarification. I understood you to say that you would accept as a condition that you would not enroll sex offenders.
Yes.
I did not understand your answer with respect to violent... Persons with histories of violent crime.
I would be willing to discuss some type of a framework for a conditional use permit if we needed to get in that type of a dialogue. I cannot sit here right now and list as a conditional use that I won't select some people that I believe have a very high chance of being rehabilitated based on 50% of the crimes that might have been committed. You have a lot of young people. You have a lot of immature people that have done stupid things. You have a lot of lost people that have done stupid things, and oftentimes their crimes do involve some type of violence. Does that mean that they are... It is not possible to rehabilitate them? Absolutely no. No, no, that's not what that means. But the sexual offender status is a deep ingrained... There's a... I think we can all agree a special sickness is somebody that's 75 years old and looks at a picture of a young girl and becomes excited. I think we all can agree that there's some type of deep, deep, deep ingrained sickness there that needs much more professional help than what we're gonna provide at Seeing Hearts Transition Home. Because someone 20 years ago was confused and lost and didn't have proper guidance at home, stole a car and went into a gas mart and got into some sort of physical altercation, and they have violent charges, I don't believe that falls into the same category as a sexual offender.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? David?
You've made compelling arguments for the need for a transition facility. Are there compelling reasons why it can't be out in the country?
Or in the non-rentable area?
Yes, yes, there is. First of all, the practical approach to all of it, these are people that a lot of them, even though we'll have a shuttle van and we'll be able to take them to and from jobs and job interviews and daily activities, um, that'll be an extreme burden on the home. Could quite possibly be that some of them have bicycles, or some of them might have a car, and they're able to get to jobs within a quarter or a quarter of a mile or half a mile because we're in the city center, and that's where most of the jobs are. But I'll take it... I'll take it a step further than that and say, most of these people... And I speak from personal experience, and I know everyone has their own personal experience. I certainly have mine. Many of them have been marginalized since the time they were young. They've never had direction in their home. They've never had a proper, healthy family atmosphere. They've been pushed out to the outskirts of town all of their life. And here again, we're gonna tell them, "We believe in you, but just not around us. Get out over there on the outskirts of town." That's part of the problem. These people need to understand that they can be contributing members of this society. They need to understand and know that there is something in them that they can believe in, and we believe in them, too. And we are going to, in a very controlled environment, in a very demanding environment, we're gonna expect them to become contributing members of this society, not over there behind the cornfields here.
I think what I've heard the people here saying, and please, if I'm reading you wrong, let me know, is it's not they're against this, they just don't think it belongs in a single-family residential area.
These...
That's what I've... Please don't do that. That's not necessary. That's what I'm hearing. If I'm right, I'm right. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
These people are returning from incarceration to single-family neighborhoods everywhere. That's where they're going. That's where they're returning to. Where do you think that they're going? Some faraway place where no one can find them? They're in the city center. They're in the county. They're all around us. We are putting them in a controlled environment, collecting them together, the ones that have exhibited a sincere desire to change, and we're gonna increase their odds of success.
How many... There may not be any numbers of this. People are being released from prison every day. On a monthly basis, how many of those released would end back up in that neighborhood without your facility? There's no way of knowing. I doubt if it would be 16.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You released 100 people from North Point. I don't know how many is released. I have no idea. I'm just pulling the number out. One or two may end up in West Danville with 16. I think that's what I hear the concerns are of these people, is that the number of people going in, and they could have sex offenders move in next to them. I realize that.
They do, already.
They do. They certainly do. But it'd be on one-on-one basis. They're not gonna be inundated with 16 people that they know that have been, many of them drug offenders or violent crimes, and they're really worried about it, and I want to ease their worries. about it, and I want to ease their worries. How do we do that?
It sounds like we're coming down to that some people just simply believe that some people aren't capable of changing, and it's not possible, it's not possible, yes, yes? And it's not possible for us to identify the ones that will have a high rate of success once they walk out of there. Well, you don't know...
Please, we don't want any personal comments, that's not necessary, and that's not going to help the situation, at all.
Do you have anything to back up or verify the reason you have gone with this particular model? It seems to me also, what I'm hearing, is that people are very concerned that there's no supervision there, there's no oversight, et cetera, et cetera. So is there anything that shows what you're, you have designed to have...
Do you have another one?
Over a group home or a halfway house, which has more structure, has more oversight, et cetera.
Is this your first facility?
Yes, this is our first facility, yeah.
No, I cannot.
Okay. Any other questions?
I've got a question.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Going back to the facility itself, the building, in that neighborhood, I was down there today and looked at it quite closely, and I'm a real estate broker, so I get a little idea of what's going on there and how to rebuild and do this and that. The concern, one of the major concerns down there are the kids with the bus stop down there, and I understand that. But maybe you do or no, don't know, know or don't know, that there's also graffiti on that building indicating gang activity. There is, there is. Now, just for the parents, just to be, you know, safe, and I'm concerned about that myself. And this goes back to the city and what they should be doing with that building and that area down there with the old homes that are, should be taken down, or whatever. How that relates to what this gentleman's trying to propose, it's up to individuals within here, and that's a decision we have to make tonight. But I just want to make sure that the people in the area who live in that area are aware of other things that could be existing down there and should be concerned.
Any, any more questions? Henry, do I need to take questions from the audience?
You can permit any further testimony that you think would enlighten the board to make this decision?
I don't think we need questions from the audience, to be honest with you. I think we've heard a lot, and if the board has any other questions, I'll be glad to listen to them, but you've had a chance to speak, and just reiterating what's already been said doesn't serve any purpose at all. Does anyone have any more questions? Steve or, or Henry, you have something to add? Okay.
Since you guys kind of closed the testimony and start deliberating or making a decision, I just want to point out, there is a motion in your packet that we typically do, this is kind of the up or down motion, pretty canned, pretty cookie cutter, and I'm sure our attorney will help you guys wordsmith whatever direction you go. But I do want to point out, we've heard a lot of passion discussion on both sides, and as a planner and have done this a long time, actually, it reinforces my belief in zoning, obviously, you know, this, this is why we have zoning ordinance, this is why communities that are smart and progressive have ordinances to work through these issues, as opposed to counties that have no, no zoning and things just go wherever without at least public debate and, and discussion. But I do want to point out that your findings are very specific on page four, and, and all the arguments you've heard, pro and con, I think it's important, and our attorney, I'm sure, will jump in here, that you guys are bound to use the findings that are sort of generalized on page four and that are canned in the motion, which come right out of KRS-100, that unfortunately, a lot of this stuff you heard is not the basis of the land use decisions you guys are going to have to make. Those items that you see on that canned motion, up or down, that A through D, that, that's right out of statute. And how you guys take all this testimony and me as your staff, just kind of giving, giving you some general guidance, you guys got to somehow bring that on down to some kind of motion that ties in with some kind of finding, state the conditions on approval, or if it's a denial, the reason for the denial, but it's key that, that this board kind of make their motions in this style, and I'm sure our attorney. But then, again, page four gives us additional guidance out of the zoning ordinance, section 3, 39322, on the things you guys have to consider in making this motion. And so I always just want to bring that up and let you know that it's here, and then Henry can take it from there and help you guys wordsmith that.
Okay.
And you guys, I guess, deliberate as long as you want, or go from there.
Henry, do you have anything to add before we go into discussion?
I, I don't think so in terms of discussion. I'm, I'm ready to add my two cents to whatever motion is made to help it conform with what's been said tonight and what's required by law.
Okay. Thank you. Open for discussion.
Has not Mr. Wilkinson added a seventh condition?
He is, and...
He has?
He has, and, and that's something that whoever makes the motion will need to add, should they choose to make a motion to approve.
Do we have any discussion at this time? Do I hear a motion, either for or against? Don't everybody speak at once, please. Jesse, David, Ken? Mike, Donna? They're thinking. Mike?
My...
Speaking to your mic, so they can hear you.
My motion that it does not meet the requirements of zoning ordinance.
Based on the findings of fact as submitted by the staff, right?
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Could I, could I add to that?
Okay, you sure can.
And you can tell me whether you agree to these additions to your motion. Based on recidivism statistics and testimony, the residential character of the area and the intensity of use, you feel that this will impair the residential character and integrity of the zone, and that no restrictions or conditions could reduce this impairment, and the use does not conform to the zoning ordinance definition of boarding house. Is that acceptable to use in addition to your motion?
Yes.
Okay, then do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Of denial, raise your hands, so Jenny can get it for the record. All opposed. Motion carries. The request was denied. I think, before we, before we say that, I would like to tell Mr. Wilkinson, I think your idea for the facility is wonderful. I don't think a single-family residential area is the place for it. Danville would love to have you as a part of it, but just not in that area.
Bring it back somewhere. Bring it back somewhere.
Yeah, but not in a single-family residential area.
Check your ordinance before you bring it back. Bring it back.
Thank you all. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Some of them adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.